Okay, welcome everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the March 1st Council Study Session to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 related to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comments opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Council President Walsh will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichele?
Here.
You. Deputy Council President Hall?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Here.
Thanks. Councilmember Ray?
Here.
Thanks. And Council President Walsh?
Here.
Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is public comments. And if there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. Or if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower left-hand corner. And I will wait a moment to see if anybody raises their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Councilmember Hunt, no one has signed up to speak and no one is in attendance.
Thank you very much. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process, and we take them very seriously and factor them into decisions we make. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isakuaqua.gov. And at this time, I will check in with Council President Walsh if we have received any email comments on tonight's agenda items before I move on.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. We have not received any email comments on the items on the agenda tonight.
Thank you very much, Council President Walsh. So with that, I will move to our first item of the agenda this evening, and that is ID 1052 Religious and Cultural Calendar. And this will be presented by Monica Negriola, Human Services Manager. Welcome, Monica.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hunt. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Monica Negriola. I'm the Human Services Manager here at the city, and I'm also the staff liaison to the Equity Board. And so tonight, I have the pleasure to speak with you about one of the very first items that the newly created Equity Board proposed. And with that, I'm gonna start sharing my screen. Give me just a moment. I think we should be all set now. Okay. So, as I mentioned, this is one of the very first items proposed by the Equity Board. And so tonight, we are seeking feedback on the proposed Religious and Cultural Calendar that is included in your packet. This was the result of work conducted in collaboration with the Equity Board, but also with individual residents, with community members, and cultural and religious groups in Isakua. And so specifically, the direction that we are seeking from you tonight, we have two questions. One, what is the city council's general feedback on the proposed calendar? And two, are there other recommendations that are different or that add to the Equity Board's recommendations? So just a little bit about the background of this project. A couple of months ago, the administration tasked the Equity Board with creating a list of various cultural and religious holidays that the city should take into consideration when scheduling public meetings. In the past, the city had received feedback either from community members or sometimes even from city staff, that at times, important meetings were scheduled on holidays or different celebrations that were celebrated by different groups. And so this conflicted with the ability of certain groups to either attend meetings or to, if they had to attend meetings, for example, some staff, then they could not participate in the celebratory holiday meetings. And so this takes me to actually the reasons why the city should consider observing and acknowledging cultural and religious holidays. On one end, just as I said, at times, public meetings and not just council meetings, but this could be commission meetings or sometimes if we do outreach for certain projects, there are times when these coincides with really important religious holidays. On the other end, the city currently acknowledges certain religious holidays, especially those observed by the federal government, like Christmas Day, for example. And so it does not provide a really fair share for all of the community members. And third, but not least, I think acknowledging holidays would also promote community respect, would encourage additional inclusion, and would formalize kind of like the city's commitment and respect to inclusion and diversity. So how did we go about working on this project? What was our approach? As we often do, we started with researching what are other local and regional jurisdictions doing around us, starting with the east side and going further into other jurisdictions and even nationally. So we did a little bit of research, contacted other cities. We also wanted to make this specific to Isakua. So we dove a little bit into more detail on the Isakua demographics and the religious communities. We then also contacted individually community members of different backgrounds and cultures, different religious groups, cultural groups, to seek their feedback on the holidays. And then last but not least, we definitely worked with Equity Board on this in seeking their input and their perspective from both the professional and the personal lens that they bring. And so the criteria that we used in creating the list that is attached to the agenda packet really provided, on one end, we prioritized holidays that pose work restrictions. And then we extended that to those that require extended fasting in addition to work restrictions, for example, or really have an utmost significance to one's religion or culture. And the more we learned, the more we discovered that sometimes there can be many, many holidays with work restrictions. And depending on the religion or culture, different communities might feel differently about the different holidays. Also, we wanted to give consideration to, again, as I mentioned earlier, to the demographic representation in Isakua. And then also, we wanted to give consideration to cultural and religious holidays that provide an opportunity for reflection and increased awareness. So let's say if we get some feedback that, I'm gonna use a silly example, that National Donut Day is a cultural holiday, we really chose to focus on those that provide an opportunity to really celebrate ethnic cultures and religions and not just preferences for hobbies, for example. And so I want to, before I talk a little bit more about the actual list, I want to talk a little bit about the challenge that we had in working on this project. And we discussed this quite a bit with the Equity Board. And I think the challenge, as you might have seen or guessed already, was really finding a balance between recognizing, acknowledging, and showing respect to the cultures and the religions represented in our community and at the same time, finding a mechanism that still works for the city. In other word, that we can still conduct meetings. One of the, as you see the list already that we have and propose is, is pretty extensive, but it's by all means is not a comprehensive list in the sense of it's not a final list. It does not include all the holidays. And so we acknowledged early on that this could be an impossible task because if we really avoid scheduling meetings on all of the holidays, we are not gonna be able to conduct any meetings. And so that was a challenge, and we discussed it early on. And so that's the reason why, kind of like to help with this, we got some really good input from the Equity Board. And so that's why we proposed a few things. On one end, then we created a tiered list, which you're gonna see in your attachment. Basically, we have two kinds of holidays on one end, ones that we recommend that city staff should make every effort to avoid scheduled meetings. And then a second list of holidays where we want these holidays to really be more an opportunity to increase awareness. They could be taken into consideration, but they're not as strongly suggested to be considered when scheduling meetings. The other things that we did in working with Equity Board in creating this list and trying to meet the challenge that I was just talking about was to really avoid absolute impositions. So the Equity Board did not make strong suggestions, but did not impose or made recommendations that should really absolutely, the city should absolutely not schedule meetings. The strongest suggestion was that the city should make every effort to avoid, if possible. Again, because we also wanted to work to highlight that this work is really work in progress. It's not perfect. It should be continuous. It should be piloted. And as one of the Equity Board members put it so well, this should not, we should not let perfection get in the way of progress. And we could spend a whole year in trying to create a more perfect list, and we realize that there's no perfection. We should just try to be as inclusive as possible. We should invite a community to provide feedback. And we should continuously change and seek input from the community on how to go about acknowledging certain holidays, but also how to go about being able to do work. And so that's why, as I mentioned, the Equity Board and all of us consider this to be a live document with ongoing modifications based on community input. And so with that, the options that we proposed for you tonight, we would love to hear feedback from you with consideration for a possible adoption of a resolution. Or we would love to hear direction on perhaps to consider a different approach. Depending on your feedback, we would love to make adjustments to the list that we provided. We would like to establish a timeline for implementing this as a pilot in 2022. And we would love to seek approval from you, City Council, by resolution. So to recap our questions tonight, really, we are just seeking general feedback on the proposed calendar and if you have other recommendations instead or in addition to the proposed calendar. And so with that, I'm gonna stop sharing, and I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. I will look to the chat if council has any questions. We have a couple of questions coming in. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. This is Council President Walsh. Monica, can you talk through what the discussion was around Ramadan, since that is a longer holiday, and what the Equity Board's recommendation is for handling something like that?
Thank you so much, Council President Walsh. That is a great question. Definitely Ramadan is one of the longer holidays that would pose more challenges. The Equity Board did not have a specific recommendation or suggestion on this. However, we did check in with community members who celebrate Ramadan. So ideally, sunset is the time of the day during Ramadan that's the most challenging. And so in a perfect world, around sunset is when the meeting should be avoided. However, I think just going back and discussing with community members, one of the ways in which we can make accommodations, for example, if council has an agenda item that is, should be presented, let's say by a city staff whose background is Islamic, perhaps we could make accommodations for that agenda item to be either before sunset or on a different day. That's not Ramadan, so as a city internally, we can make that accommodation for city staff. Similarly, let's say if the city is working on a project and would really love to conduct community outreach to community members who have an Islamic background, then similarly, we should consider making those community outreach events either before sunset or avoiding Ramadan completely. So these are some of the things that we had discussed as options. Not completely, let's say that now we are gonna cancel all the council meetings on all days on Ramadan, but trying to look at alternatives. So these are a few things that we can consider. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thanks, Monica.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mart had a question.
Thank you. So I noticed that you highlight the potential religious work impacting dates in red. Some of them say no meeting should be scheduled on certain dates. Some of them just say work restriction. I don't know what work restriction means. And then some of them are highlighted in red, but they don't have any comments at all. So I don't know what the intent is with the ones that are highlighted in red but are uncommented. Thank you.
Thank you. Another great question. So a couple of things about this. Where you see more detailed description, typically, those are exact comments that we heard from either the cultural group or the religious group. Where you see just work restriction that is based on curated information that we learned that there's work restrictions, like people should not work on those or in certain cultures, they have a day off, just as we have, for example, on Christmas Day, right? And then others, we just either did not hear back from that community or we just did not have enough information at this time to put additional information. And so that's kind of like takes me back to that initial comment on, we are actually still continuing to be in communication with different community members. Just recently, we went, we discussed and circled back with our Baha'i community, for example. They provided us an additional list to what you have in your packet. But again, it was, just as they mentioned it just so well, it was their intent for us to build community and learn from one another, and the intent was not to add to the restrictions that we have. So a little bit more than what you asked, but I hope I still also answered your question.
Generally, I mean, I look at that end of October, right? And so you've got Diwali, which is across multiple faiths, and then you have a couple of Baha'i days. And so my question is, is the suggestion that there not be any meetings held on any of those three workdays?
And since we talked also about the Baha'i holidays, actually, again, just the most recent feedback that we heard from the Baha'i community was that they would not feel strongly about us canceling meetings or not having meetings. So again, just continuing that collaboration and work with the communities and then trying to seek feedback from them. When they would recommend absolutely that we cancel a meeting, we would put that. But in this case, they just confirmed that they're not seeking that.
I see. Okay, thank you. That's much more clear. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And if I may add to that, I think in our communication with all the cultural groups, I think the intent was really to acknowledge and celebrate and not to limit our work. I think it's refreshing to learn about a holiday and perhaps even as a council meeting tonight, if there's a holiday, for us to read a little bit in advance, for us to provide some resources and be aware of that, and we can acknowledge it. But the hope is not to limit the work. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other questions at this time from council. So at this time, I will check in with the city clerk. I don't believe that we have had any attendees sign in, but would like to check in if anyone has signed up or anyone signed in to give public comments on this item.
Councilmember Hunt, we do not have any attendees present.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move now into the discussion and the questions that are posed by the administration. So as a reminder, those are to provide feedback on the proposed Religious and Cultural Calendar and also to direct the administration to maintain or not maintain the proposed timeline or consider a different approach. So I think we can start with the first one, if there's any feedback from council on the proposed Religious and Cultural Calendar. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I really like it. I think this is, this is a good effort. You know, the question will be over time, you know, what level of granularity do you go into? I'm sure there are religious communities that we don't know about or that have some really major holidays that may be represented in our community. But I think this is a great first effort, and I like that, you know, holidays of religious significance are highlighted. I mean, I'm gonna not be able to go to the 7:00 PM Ash Wednesday service tomorrow because I have a council meeting, for example, or I should say a capital finance committee meeting. So the, you know, the acknowledgement, I mean, I did that, and I can actually, as it happens, go to a noon service. But, you know, acknowledging that these are holidays and that people, in some of the cases, you know, maybe are still doing activities, but it's at a cost to their other lives, their spiritual lives or their community lives, I think is a really good thing. And, you know, there's a separate question about what's the policy to be, but as a first step to mark down what the significant dates are is just a great idea. I'm very, very happy that this has been done. Thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I too think that it's a great effort, and I think it really provides us with some good direction for both staff and the council and the boards and commissions. I think it's a very, very good effort. And I think it's long overdue. And I'm really glad that this is one of the first things that the Equity Board decided to tackle. So I just have one, a very small thought. We have a new national holiday. It's June 19th. It's Juneteenth. And on the chart, it's listed as a Religious and Cultural celebration for African-Americans. And I'm wondering if we should make that consistent with our Martin Luther King listing, which says that it's, since it is a new national holiday, I'm wondering if we should change that to United States. I certainly think, in my opinion, at least, everybody should be celebrating Juneteenth. And so that is just a very small comment about a large body of work. And so something to consider, whether we want to change that designation to make it consistent with the rest of the national holidays. But I'm very, very happy to see that this work was done. And I think it underlines, again, our commitment to equity and inclusion and great work. And the other question about, should we approve this and go forward? Yes, very certainly, I think we should. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Council President Walsh.
Thank you. Yeah, I will echo what I've heard. I think this is a good first step. I really appreciate the thought that went into not just putting out an all-right ban on dates, but to recognize why there are issues with dates, how we can either accommodate or avoid dates, and in general, just the recognition overall. I think what I'd like to see as we move forward is how we're making modifications, how we plan to make modifications for 2023. I think they, we said, kind of moving into that, what the adjustments are to board and commission meetings, whether we run into problems in any particular months, and just what the feedback is from staff as we start on this journey. I think we just, we want to take it as a continuous optimization so that it's not just set it and forget it, so that we look at it, evaluate, see what works and what doesn't, and come back and make modifications, which, I know I'm speaking to the choir here. You guys do a great job on that, but just stating it outright for what I'm looking for as we go into this. So thanks.
All right. Thank you. And I am not seeing any more comments. So I will just summarize the answers to these questions, which is, I think we have general support for moving forward with this as proposed. One possible consideration being making sure that Juneteenth is indicated as a national holiday for the United States. And then also, if we could have more information as this, as you had indicated, Monica, this will be a pilot. So if we could have information about how this is going, feedback from staff, and information on what adjustments have been made over time as this is implemented. Other than that, I heard support from those council members who spoke to this. So I think at this time, with the next question, I'll do a thumbs up, thumbs down on maintaining the proposed timeline. And so we can go ahead and do that. And then if there are any additional comments, I'll call for that as well. So council, if you could please indicate with thumbs up or thumbs down regarding if we would like to direct the administration to maintain the proposed timeline as indicated in the agenda. All right. I see unanimous support for that. So that is great. And does anyone wish to make any final comments on this item? I'm not seeing any. So thank you so much, Monica, for the presentation and for providing us with this information this evening.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you.
Great. And with that, we will now move to our second and final item of the evening, which is ID 1049 City Council Structure Options. And this will be presented by Tisha Geezer, the city clerk. Tisha, welcome.
Hello. Let me just get my slideshow going here. Okay. Great. Hello. I'm Tisha Geezer, the city clerk. And tonight, I'm here to help continue the conversation that you started at the February 15th Council Study Session regarding the city's legislative structure. So tonight, we're looking for your direction and follow-up to the conversation that was started a few weeks ago regarding legislative structure options. Based on the initial feedback we received, we're looking for some further feedback on the preferred option, which was the Option 2 Committee Squared. We're looking for some direction around standing committees and referral to committees. We're looking for some direction related to ad hoc committees and their continuation or not. And we're looking for some feedback on a scope of work for a potential ad hoc committee to realize amendments to the council rules based on direction provided tonight. This is a list of the policy questions that we will be looking for feedback on. So I wanted to start with some background to remind council of the conversation that was had on the 15th and summarize some of the outcomes. So one of the things that we talked about at that time was shifting informational presentations to written informational updates. And this would be for non items that the city was not looking for policy direction on, but were sheerly informational updates. And so the council expressed support for receiving those updates on the consent calendar in the future. And the feedback we heard from you was that you want to make sure that infra, informational updates that have pertinence to the public would be accessible in other ways on the city website. And so we have some ideas about how to do that and are pursuing that. The other thing that we heard feedback on was the idea of quarterly community listening sessions. We heard from you support for this idea. You liked the remote setting that we would be aiming for, for a majority of these meetings. You suggested having an agenda topic that was relevant to the neighborhood and having an informal dynamic and maybe an additional informal component to the meeting. And then you also asked, you know, for a reevaluation to see how these, how these are looking after a few are convened. There was also a request for some additional information. Some of this information was included in the staff report and some of it I will talk through as part of the presentation tonight. And I, I'm realizing that I didn't put a slide in here, but you know, one of the, the main outcomes of that meeting on February 15th, as I did refer to earlier, was we did hear from a majority of the council, there was support for transitioning away from the study session model to a standing committee structure. And so that's sort of an assumption as we go into the conversation tonight, that there is continued support for that model. And again, we're looking for some further refinement on, you know, how, how that will look and work going forward. So one of the things that we were asked to provide some more specificity on were the community listening sessions. And really appreciated the thoughtful feedback provided. And we propose having the first community listening session towards the end of May. Oh, excuse me. We, as I mentioned, would be looking, will be looking to identify an agenda, one or two agenda topics that have some relevance to the area of town where, which we will be holding the meeting. So again, the goal will be to have these remotely as much as possible. We are proposing in 2022, the first one would be held in May, followed by a meeting in July and October. And then going forward, are proposing a slightly different schedule. And you'll see the months listed there. One of the other changes that we'd like to propose is in months where the community listening sessions are occurring, we would like to propose not holding a committee of the whole meeting in those months. So that, that's something just to sort of recognize the meeting frequency. Certainly there may still need to be a committee of the whole in some cases, depending on the work plan items, but that is a slight change that we would like to recommend. I wanted to talk for a minute because there will be conversations tonight about sort of the flow of items into committees, in and out of committees. I just wanted to provide a brief overview of the committee process that we envision and that was shared at the February 15th council meeting. There were also some questions around this about the timing of agenda bills. So as described previously, what we're envisioning here is, is a departure from how the committees worked in 2019. So rather than the administration crafting an agenda bill and taking it to a regular council meeting for a formal referral to a council committee, instead, we will be looking to include criteria by which the city's work plan items will be automatically referred to council committees. That criteria would be included in the council rules of procedure. It's something we envision the ad hoc committee would help define and we are looking for some feedback on tonight. The administration would be keeping a list and provide some tracking so that it was known which items were going to which committee based on the criteria. And certainly we'd need to come up with some mechanisms if there was uncertainty. The items going to committee would come in the form of an ID, like they do on a study sess- session. There'd be an ID number, a title, there'd be a staff report and there'd be a presentation and then any accompanying exhibits, like an ordinance or resolution or code amendments or report. The committee would provide direction and review of that work plan item and report out. The staff would then draft an agenda bill. The agenda bill would sort of summarize some of the content in their staff report. It would summarize the recommendation of the committee and it would come to the full council for action at a committee meeting. I'm sorry, a council meeting. The next thing I wanted to touch on was timing. There were some questions and a little bit of discussion about timing of items and how shifting to a committee process might impact that. I don't have specific, you know, metrics here. There, there's really a lot of variables that come into play, but I did just want to talk for a minute about some of the timing impacts that you could expect. So certainly by creating standing committees, as council member Ray had mentioned, it creates more capacity in any given month. So there's certainly, there's certainly capacity to have emerging items come quickly to the council because we'll have all of these meetings sort of prepped and ready in any given month. However, if a committee determines they want to consider an item for more than one committee meeting, there definitely are some timing impacts as these meetings would only occur once a month. However, I see some mechanisms to, to help with a time sensitive item, where maybe the committee doesn't get quite all the way through the item. So as part of their report, they could indicate sort of those outstanding areas and they could report the item out, but sort of with a contingency that the full council consider these outstanding items or whatnot. So I do think there's some ways to, to still be expedient and thorough. But it is true that there, it will have impact on items if items are, are held within a committee. And just to mention, and this is the case in study sessions and in any sort of legislative structure option, but it is unrealistic for items being considered the week prior to be on your council calendar the following week. That's really challenging to pull off for a number of reasons. So those are just some general comments about timing and certainly if you have further questions, I'll do my best to navigate those. One of the other things that you asked for were some other committee options. So we had proposed four standing committees based on the strategic plan goal areas. And we heard from you that there might be an imbalance there, particularly with the land use and environment committee. So we did some looking at some of the other committee structures in the area and provided a few, three options. There's certainly many options here, but one of the things that we played with was moving, pulling out parks and open space as a topic and plugging that in to one of the committees that might be less busy. So you'll see that more thoroughly reflected in attachment aid to the staff report. And again, looking for additional discussion on your thoughts around how committees might look. I did take some time to reflect back on 2021 and see how those four proposed committees would have looked as far as volume. Certainly the land use and environment and the infrastructure and mobility were, were the busiest with around eight items each. Public safety and human services would have had around five items last year. And some of those items might have come multiple times. And the city services and economic vitality committee would have only had a few items. So that was definitely the one where we would, would have seen the least volume in 2021. Of course, there would be variability from year to year. So the next aspect of committees and referrals, we want to get your feedback on, is not only what the standing committees look like, but we want to get some clarity on, an agreement around what would go to a standing committee versus what would go to the committee of the whole. So at the last study session, we talked a little bit about just attempting to break up items that go to council and organize them. We talked, I talked to you a little bit about this idea of mid-level policy items being the items that would go to the standing committees, mid, mid-level budgetary and community impact, and they're limited to a specific policy area. So one of the things we were thinking about in proposing the items, I'll show you in just a minute, that we think could be good candidates for a committee of the whole are, what are some of the work plan items that, that don't fit in to one of those subject areas? And, you know, how, how would the council deal with those? So that was sort of one of the litmus tests for identifying things to go to the committee of the whole. I think one of the things we learned in the prior committee structure is it was challenging when items went to multiple committees. It was difficult from a scheduling perspective. It was also difficult to synthesize the input. And it, it didn't feel productive necessarily to have multiple conversations of three. And so I think that's one of the things we're hoping that you, you think about as you think about the kind of items that might be good candidates to go to a committee of the whole versus a standing committee. And this slide here just shows a list of some of the items, this was in, in your packet that we see in 2022 as being good candidates, but again, looking for some feedback on this. So that brings us to the first two policy questions. And councilmember Hunt, I am assuming I should continue through the presentation and these will be addressed at the end.
I think that makes sense as well. I will look to the chat in case any council members have any questions of you at this time, but I'm not, I haven't seen any during your presentation. So I think you can continue.
Okay. All right. So the next topic that we're looking for a little feedback on is on the ad hoc committees. So we had shared on February 15th, under the committee squared option, that we'd be recommending terminating ad hoc committees and the, the current ad hoc committees and also not allowing future ad hoc committees. But the question was posed and it's very fair, you know, could they continue? They certainly could. Either these ad hoc committees could be continued or the count, and/or the council can allow for future ad hoc committees to be created. So that's a question we want to pose to you tonight. I wanted to take just a minute to talk about the two that are currently on the books. One of them is the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee, which I know you're all familiar with. It's composed of three council members, it was established about two years ago. And the scope has changed somewhat. There were con- some concerns brought up about this committee and the format and process this fall. And so as you know, there's an agenda bill that was drafted to provide some potential options to deal with this committee. One of them is discharging it. One of them is changing the format to increase transparency or to change the scope. So this is a, a committee and a, an outcome we will be looking for following the, these legislative structure conversations is sort of how, how to handle this ad hoc committee. The second ad hoc committee that's on the books has not been active in some time. It is the long-term financial ad hoc committee. It's established in the city's financial policies. The committee was active previously and it provided a significant report on some transportation funding priorities back in 2019, but hasn't been active since that time. So if there is a decision to sort of terminate the ad hoc committees, we would be looking to revisit the financial policies to address that. But in, this is somewhat of a, a separate issue. While, while your decision will impact these current ad hoc committees, it's also a bigger question about whether you want to continue to allow for ad hoc committees to be created as needed, or whether you think these new standing committees are sufficient to meet the needs of the items that come before the city. So that's the third policy question there. And then the last policy question is just ensuring, you know, we're anticipating that after discussion tonight, the council might feel comfortable proceeding to establish an ad hoc council rules committee. So an ad hoc committee to propose specific amendments to the council rules. And this group would be composed of three council members and they'd be helping with, helping the clerk's office and the administration with some specific language in the council rules and some specific processes, because this will be a significant change to the council's processes. So this is a list of some of the questions that that group would be helping to answer with some guidance from the administration. And then at the bottom here, you'll see we do have a few cleanup items as well as addressing our, our new reality of ongoing virtual participation that we'd be looking for this group to help with. So we want to know, are you comfortable delegating some of these decisions to an ad hoc? The ad hoc's recommendation would come back to the full council. We see that happening later in April with a potential shift to the new structure at the beginning of May. And so that leads us to our final policy question here. We, if there's things you feel strongly about that were on that list, it would be helpful to hear those tonight to provide that guidance to the ad hoc. So again, our recommendation is to provide input on those policy questions tonight and then look at establishing an ad hoc committee in the near term to, to provide some amendments. And I just shared this timeline with you here, potential shift to the new structure in May and the first community listening session at, near the end of May. And I can go ahead and leave those policy questions up and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Council, do we have questions on this presentation? Council president Walsh?
Thank you. Tisha, I guess one of my questions is as you're looking to establish committees, I know I looked at a lot of different cities and there's a lot of different things out there and nothing is standardized, but I'm wondering how the decision was made to present four committees to us, considering we previously had three and what the thought process was there, particularly now that you've looked back at the 2021 items and seen that there would be relatively few items in the city services and economic vitality proposed committee. How do you work through that as a concept?
Sure, I'll get started and if city administrator Bob quits, he might have something to add. I mean, I think initially we were, we were looking to come to you with a, with a committee proposal. And so it was, it was an initial look. It wasn't, you know, a deep dive assessing the last few years of work plan items. And it was a look at the strategic plan goal areas was really the driver there. I think it's hard, you know, when you look at the list of committee options, you'll see there, there's some big lists under the city services and economic vitality committee. And I think if you were to look at 2020, we had a lot of business-related decisions and proposals that came before the council. I expect that committee would have been quite busy in 2020. So I think some of it is, the four committees leaves a little, little more space for some of those items and maybe some more natural divisions and the type of work and scope that when you consolidate, you can end up with some really, a really wide array of work plan items and departments and topics. So I, I think that was some of my thoughts certainly, and I'll see if the city administrator has anything to add.
Thank you, clerk Geezer, members of the council. Good evening. I think the clerk did a great job of summarizing that. The other piece is the boards and commissions, that there is a desire that was expressed that the committees would have at least some sort of regular contact, at least annual contact with the boards and commissions. And then it becomes a numbers game with that, with how many boards and commissions you assign to each of, of the various committees. I know that the city clerk has another document which lists out the various proposals that shows departmental responsibilities, boards and commission responsibilities. So clerk Geezer, it might be useful to at least have that handy to be able to put up on the screen if people want to dive more deeply into some of the component parts of the proposals.
Okay, council president Walsh, did that answer your question? Do you have additional questions?
Not at this time. Thanks.
Next question is deputy council president Hall.
Thank you, councilmember Hall here. And thank you very much for the presentation. Quick clarifying questions on the question before us about Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. If this council's direction is to limit our ability to establish new ad hoc committees in the future, that would just be a change to the rules of procedures, correct? So we wouldn't necessarily be limiting future councils that might want to go back and change the rules of procedure again. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the council rules are adopted by resolution and can, can be amended anytime. So it's, you know, a decision at a point in time and certainly that's something that could be, could be changed. And with the Title 18 Ad Hoc, as I mentioned, that's a group that could, could be grandfathered in, could be discharged, you know, it could be handled a few different ways.
Thank you.
Okay. I am not seeing any other questions from council at this time. I am not seeing any other questions from council at this time. And I do see that we have a attendee that has joined the meeting. So at this time, I will call for public comments and will indicate again, if there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but is not signed up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. And I will ask the city clerk if we have anybody who has indicated a desire to speak.
Yes, Councilmember Hunt, I see Connie Marsh in attendance, and I see that her hand is raised. So Connie, I am making you a panelist.
Well, I don't see my picture, but maybe I'm there. I'm assuming I'm around somewhere. Oh, there I am. And that you can all hear me.
We can hear you.
Connie Marsh, I live up on Squawk Mountain. And as you know, I like committees. I don't like ad hocs. I don't see my main concerns for the ad hocs addressed in this presentation, which is there's absolutely no public transparency, nor notes, nor ability to comment on those in these ad hocs. So without that nuance solved, I would have to say eliminate the ad hocs, because basically they just go underground and nobody can see what they're doing, and this includes other council members. So if you can solve that problem, I think ad hocs are sort of an efficient way to do But I don't think that they can be an invisible way to do business. That goes against sort of the idea of transparency, right? So there you go. Solve that problem, and you could have it all. Just try. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie, for those comments. And city clerk, do we have anyone else on the line or anyone else indicating a desire to speak at this time?
No, Councilmember Hunt, we do not.
Thank you. Clerk Geezer, could we have the questions back up on the screen so that council can start celebrating on those questions? And I see we have first comment from Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. So do you want, do you want my opinions on all four questions or just the first question?
Well, I think the first question, which is the, which of the committee options would we like to proceed with, I think there, I think we should probably take them one at a time. That's my, that's my thought. If council has different opinions, I'm open to that.
I'm fine with that. I just want to, I want to be a good trooper and do what I'm supposed to do. In previous meetings, I may or may not have given my opinions on everything right away, which is wrong. So I support option two. In my experience, option one, there's too much in the land use and environment committee, which also includes parks. Option three has too much in the parks and public safety and human services. Parks is a, is a big deal. And wherever parks lands, you know, it's a, it's a big topic. It's not as much as land use, but it is a big topic. So for me, option two is, is the best option. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I will see if anybody else wants to weigh in on which of the committee options you would like to proceed with. Please indicate in the chat. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. I agree with Councilmember Martz on preferring option two, but I actually believe that you could cut down to three committees and merge in economic vitality and city services along with public safety and human services, and just have three committees, one mobility, one planning and development, and one public safety and city services, including human services and parks.
Thank you. So just so I have that correct in my notes, that would be a suggestion to have three committees with, with what is in, in our options as public safety and human services and parks, economic vitality and city services together as one item.
That's correct.
Okay. And parks would also be in that item.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Have that indicated. And, and you also would be open to option two as presented by the administration?
I, I think option two would be fine, but I actually prefer three committees to four. And so I was striving a way to smush it down to three.
Okay. Thank you. I will move on now to Council President Walsh.
Thank you. I also prefer three committees to four, but I had a different variation on it. And now I'm trying to hear what Councilmember Ray said. So can I ask you to repeat that, what each of the three are, so that I can kind of note it down and grok on it?
So I, I believe it is option two with the last two committees combined. So if you go to option two of our packet, I don't have page numbers in this, but, but option two, so public safety and human services, parks, economic vitality and city services would be in one. And then the first two committees on option two remain unchanged from the graph we have in our agenda packet. Is that correct, Councilmember Ray?
Well stated.
Fantastic. Oh, thank you, Tisha. I much appreciate that. Very visual. I think I would be fine with that. I think my, my thought process was to keep parks with public safety and human services, since parks and human services are within the same department. So my thought process was to take option three and combine the first committee, which is mobility and infrastructure, and the last committee, city services and economic vitality. And so that was kind of my thought process on doing a combination. Generally, I am of the thought process that the city services and economic vitality doesn't have as much of a workload. That being said, I, I might change my mind if the finance work plan items in that committee were more robust than the way that we handle finance right now. So if we took some of the stuff that the Long Term Finance Committee did, if we started looking at our hiring and expenses and revenue more deeply on a quarterly basis and how we can adjust what our spending is, I, I think that could potentially add to the work plan of that, and I think it could give it enough robust. So I will back up and say, my top preference is three committees using option three and combining the first and the last. I think maybe my second preference is what Councilmember Ray put, and my third reference, I could go either way between two and three, option two and three. So thanks.
Okay. So your first preference, then, just to make sure I have this correct, is that mobility and infrastructure would be combined with parks, economic, parks, economic vitality and city services, so parks would be in there too? And not parks? Okay.
No. If you're looking at option three on the screen, I would keep the middle two committees as is, and then I would just take mobility and infrastructure, combine it with city services and economic vitality.
Okay. I think I have that. Okay. And preference for three committees over four. So I have that as well. Okay. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hall here. I was thinking really similarly to Councilmember Ray about if we look at option two, smushing the third and fourth committees together. I'm pretty open, though, I have to say, you know, whatever meets the council's needs, I'm happy to go with that system. I feel like I can meet my needs as a council member under any of these options, and if we combine them down to three. So I was thinking pretty similarly to Councilmember Ray, although I also could see an argument where parks, and maybe this is because I've spent the last few months with Councilmember Martz on the Capital Finance Community Task Force, and so I'm thinking of parks, parks as infrastructure in my brain right now, but I also see a benefit to keeping that paired with human services and keeping the whole department whole in one committee and, you know, figuring out where we can do that amongst all the committees. But in the very least, recognizing that parks and community services could exist in one committee, and there's probably a benefit to that. So again, I'm pretty open to whatever the needs are of the council, but that kind of option 2.5 that Chris described with either parks remaining in that new committee or being moved up to mobility and infrastructure is where I'm thinking. I also just want to say, I think that we need to acknowledge and just be okay with the fact that the workload's not always going to be balanced, and I think that's fine. You know, I, I think a few weeks ago, I was very set in my ways that it needed to be balanced. But if we think about it, even just year to year, the work plan items that are going through our public policymaking process ebb and flow. And so no matter what, year after year, workload on each committee is also going to ebb and flow. So as long as we acknowledge that and just are okay with that, I think, I think we'll be set up for success. Another thing, well, you know what? I'll save that comment for another question. So that wraps up my comments for now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. So I wanted to offer to anyone who hasn't made a comment yet, so Councilmember De Michelle, Councilmember Cho, if you wanted to make a comment, and then I do have a comment for round two, but wanted to first check in with those council members who haven't made a round one comment yet. And if you'd like us to just go ahead and start round two, that is also fine. Okay. I'm not seeing those comments. So I will, I will make my comments, which is, I agree with Deputy Council President Hall. I think there is no way to make the workload equally, you know, perfectly equally distributed. It wasn't also perfectly equally distributed across council members under the study session because we also had ad hocs, which were three of the committee members, and we consistently had items that we felt as a, as a council needed to have that additional conversation in the ad hoc committee. So, you know, some study sessions had more items, some study sessions had less items. I think that that's just the ebb and flow of the workload, and different council members will also have different numbers of committees that they serve on, and that's also the reality of, of going to three-person committees. So I think nothing's going to be perfect. I went into this conversation thinking we could try to balance the workload as best we could and then check in six to, six months to a year later and potentially check in, see how we're doing, and potentially revise if we really felt that there was a imbalance that needed to be corrected. However, I, I am also, I am also, if, if it's the will of a majority of the council, I would also be fine with combining to three committees, as was proposed by Councilmember Ray. And the reason why I, I would not be supportive of combining mobility and infrastructure with another committee is that in the past, and I believe going forward, mobility and infrastructure is a top priority of the community. It is a very big workload, I believe. We will have a lot of items that will require a lot of discussion. And as, as the city clerk did her review of 2021, that, that has consistently had a high amount of items that would go to that committee even during the last two years, which have been the, over the course of the pandemic. So I think, I think the capital improvement plan, the mobility master plan, these are very large, important items, so I would not be in favor of combining that. I do think that public safety and human services and then economic vitality and city services, those could be combined. And I also think it is, for parks, I think parks staying with human services, because that's the way our department at the city is arranged, is a, is a logical combination. So to conclude, based on this conversation, I think the three committees as proposed by Councilmember Ray would be something I am intrigued with pursuing. And I will now go to any council members that have comments for round two on this item, and I'll first go to Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. I certainly think we can do whatever, and we can revisit in some amount of time and rebalance. I do think that, I think that there's actually one flaw in this, which is you can't have the capital improvement plan just be in one subcommittee. It has tentacles across multiple departments. For instance, there's a massive part that's parks, right? And whoever is doing parks should do that part of the capital improvement plan. If the CIP goes across groups, then mobility and infrastructure doesn't have as large of a workload if it's not doing all of CIP. But we'll figure that out, and that's fine. But the big thing is CIP really does need to go, historically, it worked really well, and it went to all the subcommittees, and then came back to the full council after the committees looked at it, because all the committees got to look at it in detail, and the public got to hear about, you know, the capital improvement plan projects to a level of detail that we haven't been able to do when, when it's been all seven of us looking at it. So thank you. That concludes my comments.
I'm looking to the chat if we have any additional comments on this first question. I don't see any. Okay. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you, Zach Hall here again. I wasn't sure if this was as applicable to this one, but I think it's more applicable to this than the other ones. I just want to say, too, that I'm not yet, I'm happy, again, I'm happy to do what the council's will is here, and I think my needs will be met under any system, but I'm not yet convinced that transitioning away from a study session model is going to lead to, you know, a more successful outcomes than we have currently. And here's why. One of my, one of the desired outcomes that we had from our city council retreat was to feel more confident and comfortable about how mature an agenda item was before it came up for adoption, right? We talked about kind of having a three-touch policy and not having a system where we provide feedback on something, knowing that changes are going to be made in the background, and then the next touch is seeing those changes and having to act and adopt something on the spot there. So with that, if we make a transition to a committee model, in my mind, I'm seeing that that would mean, if we still want to meet that desired outcome, that we would all need to be making sure we're reading the packets for all the committees and providing questions ahead of time for the chair or for the, for staff to bring up answers to the other committees, so that way our feedback is being incorporated along the way, and so we feel comfortable when it comes. Because our first touch on items that aren't going to our committees are going to be on adoption day at a regular city council meeting, right? So I just wanted to bring that up and ask if that's, we, people don't have to answer it right now, but it, maybe you can incorporate it into comments later on, but is, is that how you're thinking about it, or am I thinking about it in a, in a, in a wrong way, too? So I just want to make sure that's on everyone's mind, because, you know, one of our goals was really feeling, feeling confident about the state of an agenda bill before we take a final vote on it. Thanks.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Just one thought that I had, I support Councilmember Ray's proposal to have only three committees. But the thought I had was, if a council member is serving on the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, just because of the, the way the, the workload works out, we could have a council rule that people on that committee only have one council assignment for the year, and then the remaining four would split between the other two committees. And I'll throw that, throw that out as an idea so that the workload seems to be more manageable and more fairly distributed for consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, councilmember Joe. I. I'm not seeing any other. Comments. I will make one additional rounds to comment, which is in response to. One of the concerns. That Deputy Council President Hall raised. So from my experience, I remember when we transitioned to study sessions thinking. Well, how are we going to have all of the materials and all of the discussions that we had in all the committees? Now all of us doing all of that discussion on every item. And so. You know, that was sort of the flip side I, I feel to your concern about. Or how are we going to read all of the packets that are now going to all of the committees? So I think that, I think there is a. A. Trade off in my mind, I think we will be able to work well in the committee structure, but there is, there is a, a difference because the detailed in-depth conversation oftentimes would take place. At the committee level with those three council members and then. The, the higher level conversation at, at the committee, at the council level for the regular meeting. So there, there is definitely a trade off. In my opinion, I think we can make it work, and that's in part because I've. I, I think it worked previously. And so. I just wanted to acknowledge that, that I think it kind of goes both ways, because I remember feeling the same, the same way, like so all of these packets are now all going to be all together, and we're going to have all of these conversations that we previously all had in groups of three now all together. And you know, how is that going to work? And I will go now to councilmember. Mark.
Thanks. Round three. I'll make it brief. You know, some of this is going to require trust, right? I mean, one of the things that it will require is, you know, we're all going to read our packets. But at the end of the day, on terms of fine details, we're going to have to trust that the committee did its job. And that. If there's a verb tense and they didn't get to it, that, you know, maybe we don't correct the, the verb tense, right? So that's, you know, that's, that's part of how this will operate. I want to respond to councilmember Joe had a suggestion about. How we would parse out committees. One of the nice things about if there's three committees, and I, I don't really have a preference between four and three, honestly. One of the things with three that you get is. Instead of saying that everybody. Who's on one, the three people that are on one committee, if they're only on that committee, it means the other four people have to serve the other two committees between them. Which is, which is a tall ask. What we did in the old days. Was usually if you were a chair of a subcommittee, you were only on that subcommittee. What that did was it meant three people only had one committee. And then the other four people, does math add up on that? I'm not sure the math adds up on that. You know what? I'm not sure now. I apologize. I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm remembering it right. We had a, we had a setup, and it was either that the chairs only had one committee. Or that our council leadership only had one committee. Maybe that's what it was, that the, the council. President and the deputy president each only had one committee, and then we. Parse everything up amongst the other five council members. Maybe that's how that worked when there were four committees, because we started, we used to have four committees. I apologize. I'm getting a little tongue tied, but there's, there's a number of ways to do it. But I would, I would be concerned if mobility and infrastructure only had, if those three council members were only on one committee, because the other four. People would have to cover all the other committees. So I would prefer a mechanism that either had an allowance for the people that were chairing. The committee, because there's work associated with that for the chair. Or an allowance for our council leadership who are busy answering lots and lots of emails and, and helping plan meetings like this. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I think we're, I think we're circling around a couple of options that have been mentioned multiple times. So I will, at this point. I will, at this point summarize that we've had multiple options thrown out there. One option that has been mentioned by multiple of us, multiple. Council members is. Option two, but combining public safety, human services and parks, economic vitality and city services. So that is. If you imagine this slide here, but combining the last two rows. And I, I think at this time. Having discussed that and many other options, I think it would be good if we do, and I will go to a review. Thank you. I think it would be good to do thumbs up, thumbs down on if that's something we can. Live with for a while and then see if, if that, if there is a majority on that. And I see council president Walsh has a question.
Thank you. Yeah. Before we give indication of preference, I just want to take a moment to ask the administration whether they see problems with combining those two. Into a single committee, particularly around the commissions and boards, given the number there.
Councilmember Hunt, council president Walsh. I, I think the council's going to have to decide how much you want to spend with the boards and commission, because that one committee would then pretty much have a board or commission every, every meeting. Over the course of a year. So. I think that's, that's going to be a question if, if the desire is to, you know, have a, a single meeting each year with each board and commission to delve deeply into their. Work plans. That's going to take a lot of time. And I think that was, again, as we mentioned at the beginning of the discussion, that was one of the drivers. Looking at four versus three was that point. So, you know, we can make anything work. My. My experience in other communities is that those conversations between the council and boards and commissions. Aren't always as fruitful as you hope. For, for a whole variety of reasons. So we would, I think, need to work at making sure that those were as meaningful for all concerned as possible. But I think that will take up a lot of time for that, that third committee with all those boards and commissions.
Thank you. Council President Walsh, did you have any additional questions that answer your question?
Yeah, that gives me lots to think about where, where my balance is between our time allotment and staff time allotment versus. Hearing from the commission. So thanks.
Okay. I am not seeing any other comments or questions on this, which is the first question of several questions on this item this evening. So at this point, I'm going to do. Thumbs up, thumbs down on. What was referred to as option two point five, which is. Option two in our packet, but combining the second, the, the last two rows. And if this, if we don't have a majority, then we will. Continue and, and start. Conversation again. So at this point, those who are in favor with proceeding with option two point five. Please. Indicate thumbs up. We have a majority. Thank you. Okay, so we will proceed with, with option. Two point five as described earlier this evening. And the next item. That we have is on. I believe is on. Was, if you could pull up that item, I think it's of the proposed. Committee of the whole items. Do you see any of them belonging elsewhere? Yes. Okay. So of the proposed committee of the whole items, do you see any of them belonging elsewhere? If so, where would you see these items fitting? Does anybody, and I'm going to. And councilmember Martz, did you have a comment on this item? Or was that on the previous item? Okay. So I will go ahead and thank you for pulling up those, those items that are potential committee of the whole items. First comment is from councilmember Martz.
Thank you. I thought I saw a different slide that also talked about. Potential cow items, including. Topics that cover multiple. Subcommittees. Yeah, there we go. Impacts the scope of multiple committees. I am not in favor of doing it that way. As I mentioned with capital improvement plan. The city had a rich history of literally subdividing the work out to the subcommittees. Themselves and then reintegrating it back at the, at the full council. So I don't think merely because a topic covers. Multiple committees, it should automatically go to a cow. I think if it's a sort of a philosophical question that has impact. Across different committees, maybe, but if it's a, again, I use capital improvement plan as the obvious one where there's, where it's a rich detail, where each of the committees can. Plow through its, if, I guess if it can be cleaved up into multiple committees, it should be. But if it's a, if it's a central philosophical topic that impacts multiple committees, then fine, cow. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Martz. I see that we have a comment from city administrator Bob Quitz.
Yes, thank you, councilmember Hunt. City clerk, can we go back to the other slide? I think it's very important for the administration to be as specific as you can. I think as councilmember Martz said, over time, there might be overarching issues that come up that perhaps would come into that. But I, I, we think that these are the regular. Issues and it would be very important, I think, for the administration to know upfront if the council's in agreement, especially issues with Title 18. Councilmember Martz now has mentioned a couple of different times, the CIP, we would, we really need to get clarity on that, if that's something the full council agrees with. There's going to be lots of moving parts with. Free committees, committee of the whole, two council meetings. We just want to make sure that we're not spending a lot of time stumbling over where, what's going where and having the council disagree. Regularly on that, that that's just going to add another layer of complexity. So perhaps we could just focus on as much specifics as possible this evening, recognizing, of course, that there will always be. New things that come up, which may very well need to be committed to all.
Thank you, city administrator Bob Quitz. Councilmember Martz.
Yeah, okay. So I think the annual work plan could be carved out. Into the sub, into the relevant subcommittees. I think Title 18 should go all to one committee. I think option two point five racial equity would, would go to one committee. I think budget is probably a cow level issue. And all the rest of it is cow level. That's my, that's one of seven. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Martz. I. I'm not sure I got that. So I, I believe, so right now on this screen, there's annual work plan and strategic plan review, but specifically the annual work plan, you said. You recommended splitting that into committees. And then.
And I guess there are, there are performance measures associated with that work plan, so they would probably go out. In this, they're, they're tied to that work plan, right?
Okay, so performance measures also split out. Title 18.
Would go to a committee. I'm a little fuzzy on whether we'd go to the first or the second committee based on the new three committee structure, but I'd send it to one or the other.
Okay. And then. The other items. Here are.
Would be cow. In my, in my perfect universe, if I can live the magic wand.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I caught that. Councilmember Ray.
I didn't realize I was up next. I think all of these look fine to me for the cow except Title 18, which seems like a very much a land use thing and should be in our land use. Committee, whichever one that is. The other thing that I just like to throw out here is I think there's an option, I would like to see an option. For a subcommittee to refer something to the cow. So if the subcommittee is working on something and they believe it is of significance and needs a little bit. Broader viewpoint, then they can do a referral to the cow and it could move up the. Up the chain, if you will. So, but the only thing I would have take off the list of potential items is the Title 18.
And Title 18, do you have thoughts as to?
Whatever, whatever the second line was an option to, I forgot what it was called. You know.
Planning, development and environment. Thank you.
The one, thanks.
Great. And councilmember, sorry, council president Walsh, I, I'm sorry, I think I might have missed that you had wanted to comment. It was before I. Indicated the item. So. Would you like to comment?
Yeah, no, don't worry about it. I'll, I'll find my way in wherever, wherever you call on me. We're good. I guess what I would say is, as much as I think Title 18 has so many important. Elements and I would love to see it at cow. I just think it really needs a deep dive. And so I'd be comfortable. Putting that in, in a committee. I think the racial equity toolkit probably belongs with the committee that has the equity board. And so I don't see a problem with that. So I think I'm pretty similar to what councilmember Martz was saying. I could kvetch on annual work plan one way or the other. So I'd be comfortable with that coming to. Cow or potentially getting split up. And I will also agree, I think the capital improvement plan being. Taken to its respective committees makes the most sense in my mind. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, councilmember Hunt. I, I think Title 18 is, is council president Walsh indicated, it does need a deep dive and should go to a subcommittee for, for a discussion. I'm going to talk a little bit about the racial equity toolkit. I, I think that. When I talk to, to young people out in our community, and when I talk to people that are. Really, really. Concerned about the racial equity issue, they, they want to see it. Really discussed in our community. And I think having in the cow. Where all seven of us are there and the, the community knows when it's going to happen. They know they can make comments there. There's not a, a ambiguity about, about how they participate. I think that the racial equity issue still needs to remain as a cow issue for all seven of us to consider. And I'd hope that we would keep it as a potential cow item. Thanks. But I don't have any. Opinions either way in terms of the other items that were discussed for, for putting. In other committees except for Title 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you very much, Zach Hall here. I think I'm. In the minority here. I, I can't believe we actually call it cow. So that's news to me, but. I think the way clerk Gieser described it as issues going, I'm not going to call it that, the committee of the whole being a high level policy. And have, you know. Overact, overarching impact, impacting multiple committees is the right way to think about it. I think when you hit a certain threshold and things are so important for city government that. It should be considered by us all. I think the racial equity toolkit is one good example, and I would agree with councilmember Joe about that. The only one that I see on this list here that I might. Agree with my councilman, or which my colleagues on is Title 18. I would. Personally. You know, like to be very involved with its development going forward. And if I'm not on that committee, my needs will, will be met by following the committee's progress. So I'm fine with whatever the council wants to do. With that, but I do think that for the most part. It makes, it makes more sense. And again, I haven't been in a committee structure before, so I haven't seen how things get divided out into different committees. So. With my lived experience and how I'm approaching this, it makes more sense for. Things that might split up into multiple committees to instead stay whole and go through a committee of the whole meeting. So that's the way I'm thinking about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle.
I think you missed council, oh, councilmember Hunt, were you going to make a remark or do you want me to go ahead?
And please go ahead. I can go after you. Thanks.
I was going to say you missed yourself, but. At any rate. I wanted to plus one councilmember Joe's comments on the racial equity toolkit. I, I think that's something that we should all be looking at. I really have concerns about removing. I really have concerns about removing Title 18 from the Council of the Whole. It's a huge body of work and now we're going to and then we we had a whole ad hoc committee that was looking at it and. Now we're going to give it to one of the committees as part. Of their work plan, it's that seems to me. I I just I I feel like Title 18 is so important and we should all be tracking and understanding it together. So I know, like Councilmember Hall said, I know I'm in the minority here, but. That just to me does not make sense to take something that with that much work attached to it. And give it to a subcommittee at this point, I think we all need to be dealing with that, so. Those are my comments, and again, I realize I'm in the minority here, this this list looks good to me. Except that I might agree with Councilmember Mart's that we need to add the CIP here, but. This list looks good to me the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele, and I see that Councilmember Mart's. Has indicated a comment for round two. I also thought if you could clarify Councilmember Mart's, my understanding regarding the CIP. Your comments earlier about the CIP was that not that it go to the Committee of the Whole, but rather that it be split up into. Parts that would go to the different committees, but if you could clarify that in addition to your comments, that would be great. Thanks.
Correct, and yes, I had envisioned doing it the way we used to do it, which is parsing it out to the to the committees. I respectfully disagree with my friend and councilmember, fellow councilmember DeMichele. The problem with doing Title 18 at cow. Is it really needs a line by line read and that really has to occur at whatever. The spiritual successor to Land and Shore is. Land and Shore used to get into line by line, if you take out a verb. If you have to, if you have a verb and another verb and you take out the second verb, what does it do to the? What does it do to the code? We can't do that at cow, unfortunately, we're not, we're not set up to do that, we haven't shown that we can. Have a six hour meeting on one topic, which is sometimes what it takes when you're doing stuff like land use code. So I understand the spirit of it, it's a super important. Issue, but in the in the old days, what we just had to do is we had to let Land and Shore grind it out. In the super long meeting after sometimes it took three meetings just to get through. A body of work once, because there was so much detail to it. And then it came back to full council and we all sort of, we looked at the big issue, we looked at the report that came out of committee, we, you know. Looked at the administrative report of what had been done in committee, but there's really, there's a level, the code is so critical. I get your point, which is it's so critical, we all need to understand it, but. My point is it's so critical that it means a level of specificity and a level of. Inspection by council that just doesn't doesn't work unfortunately at a cow, so. And we squared that circle in the past by usually on a good day, trusting that committee that they did their job and. Sticking once it came back to full council to to the higher level discussion. So I don't know if that helps, but that's that's the way I saw it, I'm just, I'm really eager to see some of the things in Title 18. Reviewed in a committee structure in detail, the way we used to in Land and Shore with the public being able to comment on it. It made for better legislation and I've been missing that while we've not had committees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we have some themes here, so I will, I will try to. If we have consensus on something, so if we could go back to the grid view. Okay, so the first thing that came up multiple times was from this list was regarding. Title 18 and the suggestion would be Title 18 doing a deep dive at. The Planning, Development and Environment Committee, which is the. Successor, I believe, to what used to be Land and Shore several years ago. So I think since that came up in multiple comments, I think if we do a thumbs up, thumbs down on taking that one off of the Committee of the Whole list and putting that in that committee. Let's go ahead and do that now, so those who are in favor of putting that into. Planning, Development and Environment, please say indicate now. We have. A consensus. We have a consensus that that will go to that committee. Several other items from that list were mentioned. One was the. Work plan, the annual work plan and the associated performance measures, so. Actually, I will, I'll start with. If you want to not take any of the other items out of the Committee of the Whole, let's go ahead and do that first. And then if if that fails, then we will go item by item, because several other items were mentioned. So this will be thumbs up if you if you're okay with the rest of the item, Councilmember Mart.
Where's the capital improvement plan in that conversation?
I think we have to do that one separately because that is not on the administration's. Recommended list to go to the Committee of the Whole and is currently on the administration's recommended list for one committee, which is mobility and infrastructure. And the suggestion is to split it out into different committees, not to Committee of the Whole. So I think we'll do that one next.
Separate, thank you.
Separate, yes. Okay, so. Thank you for bearing with me, let's go back to if if you are okay with the other items. That were on that Committee of the Whole list, other than Title 18. Staying at the Committee of the Whole level, indicate thumbs up now. Okay, that that passes. Or that has a majority, thank you, and now we will go to the. Last question, I believe, on this item, this question, subquestion, and that is. The CIP is currently proposed to be only going to mobility and infrastructure, there is a suggestion that it be divided up. Amongst subcommittees, so. I think we will go with the question being. That Council, Deputy Council President Hall. Question.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt, just because I'm seeing kind of a similarity between this question and where the comprehensive plan might live. Would that, should we consider this the same way? Maybe we can ask the administration to. Is the comp plan previously when we had a committee structure, was the comp plan also broken up or? Was that a Committee of the Whole item?
Let's ask the City Administrator, City Administrator, do you have thoughts on the process for the comp plan under a committee structure?
Councilmember Hunt, members of the council, I do not, I I would encourage you to let's. Let's come up with the scope of what that discussion will be and perhaps at that point have the council make that consideration. We were just beginning to scratch the surface on that and it will be many months before we come to to start those discussions.
Okay, and and to to clarify, that would be the. Big revisions to the comp plan, but that we also have amendments that we. Consider as a docket every year and that would continue with the current process, is that correct?
That that's correct, the the dock, the docket would, and I would imagine then. Before the docket comes back, for example, in December, that it would go to your new. Planning, Development and Environment Committee. First. As it would, we would have brought it to the study session model previously.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will. I will now go back to the question. So first Deputy Council President Hall, does that take care of your question? Are we good? Okay. So now we'll go back to the other question, which is CIP currently in mobility and infrastructure proposal to split it out into constituent parts into the three committees. So those in support of splitting out the CIP indicates. With a thumbs up, so this would be to split out the CIP into. The the three committees in the committee structure, indicate thumbs up. One, two, three. Okay, that passes, all right, and I think. Did I miss anything? Did anybody want us to consider as a body any additional either removing or anything else? No, okay, okay, great, so we have a few more questions. The first, the next question, I believe, is should the ad hoc, should ad hoc committees be retained and used in some cases, if so, what should criteria be? And we have comments, Councilmember Mart.
Yes, but sparing, I I would like to not see any standing ad hoc committees. I I just, I don't want to seem ruled out, I don't want us, I don't want us to say, no, we can't ever have an ad hoc. But I, we shouldn't have ad hocks that go on forever. And they don't really, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be facetious, they're not going on forever, but they're going on for a very long time. I share some of the public's concerns about transparency and how ad hocks work, so I want to keep them in our toolkit, but I want them to be used sparingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Walsh.
I think Councilmember Ray was ahead of me, but.
Oh, I am sorry.
It's just quick pro quo from last time.
Yep, yeah, Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, I think ad hocks can be a valuable tool, I think we need to use them sparingly. I don't think we have to do ad hocks behind closed door, there's no reason we can't televise and invite the public to ad hocks, so. That's 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 the distinction we make, but we don't have to make, we can have them be public and make them. Available, I know it puts a little more burden on the 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 city staff to support them, but that is certainly an option that I would like to see going forward. And and I think that. The criteria for when to have an ad hoc is when there's a majority of the council thinks that there is a need for one. And I agree with Councilmember Mart's that they need to have a sunset date, whenever you set one up, it needs to have a date where it goes away, so it's my my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray, Council President Walsh.
Thank you, I will concur with what I have heard. I think the two existing ad hocks should be folded into respective committees. I think, but I think that. We should reserve the right to pull together an ad hoc as needed. And be very clear about an end date and be very clear about the fact that we can absolutely do it in public and. With video and public participation, so I don't think that. That I think we can solve for that concern without having to eliminate ad hocks as a potential tool in our tool belt. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Council, Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you, Zach Hall again here, completely agree. I think that most of the issues that are being concerned considered by the. Two ad hocks right now can be considered through the new committee model. I personally thought a little bit about the criteria in that maybe. Ad hocks could be established to address emerging or immediate needs that come up. That aren't, that we won't be able to adjust through the monthly committee meetings or monthly committee, the whole meetings, if something needs to happen. More quickly, but I also agree that we, you know, we don't necessarily need to put a lot of restrictions on that. And I don't see any reason to not have. Ad hoc business conducted. Transparently and on camera or whatever, so I would be interested in what the. Ad hoc on ad hoc committees. Would think about how we kind of put that in city rules or if we just try to kind of emphasize that that is an important value of this across city council. And go that route, and then I agree that a sunset date. Is a good idea and maybe if we have it in a way that this is the date that. The full council must reconsider whether or not additional ad ad hoc work is needed and we go that route, so the emphasis would be on. Continuing to do it instead of closing it and then saying, well, we need to reopen it so we can. Dig a little bit more deeper depending on what the issue is, so. That's what I'm thinking. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, I agree with with all that's been said, I think we should keep ad hocks in our tool chest. I think the current two ad hoc committees could be discharged, however, or the work. Transferred over to the committee system. We've talked about, I think we should have clear. Expectations of ad hoc committees and everybody's mentioned the sunset date, I also think a clear statement of the body of work. And. I also think that if we put a sunset date on and that turns out not to be realistic, the council can always extend that sunset date, so. So I think it, I I would not want us to completely decide that we're not going to have ad hoc committees, but I do think. We have to be really clear. When they're, when they are used and how for how long and. And what the product is that they are supposed to be coming back to us with at the end.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele, I will make my comments on this, which is I agree with what's been said and I would. Add. I think they should be used very sparingly, but they should also have a defined deliverable, and I think that's. I think that would help a lot with the concerns around transparency, because if you have. An ad hoc and they get together and, for example, if the ad hoc. That is looking at the council rules, their deliverable is a draft of the rules that incorporates all of the comments that have been at the council level and. implements those in our roles, so you have a deliverable, which is that updated version of the rules document and that will be what is produced by the ad hoc and. You will see the work of that committee in public and can, it can be discussed in public at the council level when it comes for a decision. So I think I think with the sunset date, which I support the, you know, clear defined scope and then also like a clear defined. Deliverable of the committee and then report outs. As at each meeting that that ad hoc has, I I think that it's a. It's a tool that we should keep in the toolbox and use very sparingly, only when. Necessary as as the Deputy Council President Hall said. So I agree with all of that, and I think I think since we're all in agreement and since I didn't hear any, any really. Any council members that I think disagreed with that. I think we have a consensus, if any council member disagrees, please indicate in the chat. Not seeing anyone, so I think we have a consensus on that and I'll just check in with the city clerk, do you have what you you need on that question? Yes, okay, I see nodding, great, thank you. Last, I believe, I believe it's the last question. Are you comfortable delegating the outstanding items to a council rules ad hoc committee? And we did have a list of what these outstanding items. Could be, I recall some of them having to do with, you know, the role of the chair and, okay, so now we have the list up here. The question before the council is, are you comfortable delegating the outstanding items to a council rules ad hoc committee? Anybody like to start us off? Council President Walsh.
Thank you, I think this is a really great use of an ad hoc committee that has a clear deliverable and. A set, you know, a sunset date and a defined scope. I think kudos to Clerk Geezer for. Creating this list and being very thoughtful about it. I can tell that whoever's on the ad hoc committee will do a great job in answering these defined questions and yes, I feel. Very comfortable with. Taking that first step toward a committee where I trust my fellow council members to do the work defined so that. We can do a better job of our governing. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Walsh, Councilmember DeMichele.
Thumbs up and, yeah, I I love the idea of having an ad hoc committee on committees, so. Let's do it.
Okay, thank you, all right, so I am not seeing any other comments, we had only, oh. The Administrator Bob Quitz has a question.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hunt, I guess we would also like direction on how this ad hoc committee will conduct its business. Is this something you would like televised on cable television? Is it sufficient to have this as a video meeting? Would you like to have it meet in person? Because I think we're we're certainly going down that road and if you meet in person, would you like the meeting televised? We'd like some direction on on that, please, as well.
Okay, thank you. So so far, council members have been supportive of delegating outstanding items to a council rules ad hoc and now the question is. How that ad hoc. And now the question is, um, how that ad hoc would work? I will go ahead and make comments now, um, from my perspective. I previously served on the rules ad hoc. I, I believe I mentioned that last time this came up. And in that, um, in that ad hoc at that time, I felt that we really codified conversations that had been had at the council level or that were things like, how is the chair, um, what is the chair, role of the chair? Where there's other information based on the chair as they serve in, in other instances that are already documented in our rules. So it's just sort of saying, refer to this other part of the rules. So I, I would be, um, supportive of having an ad hoc that does that work, um, in person if that is, uh, if that is, seems the way we are meeting, which I believe the plan right now is that we will start meeting in person soon. Uh, so I would be fine with that and I would be fine with, um, the deliverable being a version of the, the code that would then be shared at the full council for deliberation and then, um, adoption. And so I, I don't think that that needs to be televised and don't exactly see value in that because all of the conversations would really have already happened at the council level and then any, any discussion would be on the deliverable, which would also be at the council level. Um, and I will open it up for any other comments from any of my fellow council members on this question that has been posed by City Administrator Bob Quitz. Councilmember Ray.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Hunt. Um, I, I, I agree with you and I actually sat on the rules committee when we went away from committees. And, um, I, I don't know that, um, this is going to take a, a lot of time to do. I think we've got, we have a lot more direction moving to committees than we had when we were moving away from committees. So, so that feels good to me and I don't know that it needs to be televised, but I'm not opposed to it being televised, other than it's, uh, you know, it may cause some conflicts and some scheduling issues. But the final product, which I think will be rules and procedure, will come back to the committee for part of the, the council for, um, you know, final review and, and adoption. So, um, that's, um, that from a, just a mechanical perspective, I think that that all makes sense in person is great. Um, and then I think it's really, I would leave it up to council leadership to figure out the, the, you know, the specifics and how the, how, how we're going to do this.
Okay, I see some questions. Um, Council President Walsh has a question.
Thank you. Toward that idea, um, I'd like to ask the council if there is a preference on how the ad hoc committee members are chosen. Um, do we feel it should be the same way we've done with ad hocks in the past? Um, and the same way we do with kind of the regional boards where everybody sends in their preferences and then council leadership discusses and makes the assignments? Or is there any specifics of, we want to make the decision tonight as a body of seven, who those members are?
Okay, thank you for that question. So I have a, um, I think I will note that question and we have a comment from Deputy Council President Hall, but I believe that was to a prior item. So maybe we'll go through any comments on the, the current item, which is the way the committee would work for the, for the administration's information and then, um, loop back around to your question, which is how the committee members are chosen. Um, so Deputy Council President Hall.
Uh, thank you. I was just going to echo a, a lot that's been said that I don't think, um, I think if we have a clear scope of work and a deliverable, like, like you were saying earlier, Councilmember Hunt, um, and the community and the public can expect to see recommendations on these questions come to a council meeting on April 18th, that, um, you know, there's a clear path there for, for community engagement on, um, after these questions have been considered by a small group. So I don't necessarily need, I don't think it needs to be televised. Um, and then, um, I will just real quickly, because I'm talking now, I, I think it would make sense to just stick with our current system of selecting, um, members for committees and, and to ask people who have the time and the ability and the interest to email council leadership, but then council leadership and the administration can make a decision on who can fill those seats. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. I will give it a minute in case any other council member would like to speak to the city administrator's question. I'm not seeing anyone. So then, um, first I'll check in with the city administrator. Uh, city administrator Bob Quitz, do you have direction on that item?
Yes, uh, my, my sense is the council's direction is to just have a meeting that's not televised and then we'll report out the results at a public meeting that will be in, in April.
Yes, I, I think, I agree. I think that is the consensus and also to make sure that we adhere to the earlier standards that we set for ourself, which includes the sunset date, the scope and the deliverable as well, that those should all be defined. Um, and in this case, I think a lot of that is built into our packet already with those questions. So that is very helpful. Um, and then, uh, we will revisit now council, uh, Deputy, Council President Walsh's question, which is choosing, the, the process for choosing committee members. Um, and previously this has been done by, uh, by council members sending in their preference to the leadership, leadership looking through all those preferences and kind of trying to divide up workload and, um, similar to regional committees. Uh, so we have one council member weighing in in support of that. And I see a comment and a question from Councilmember Ray.
Um, I, I was going to weigh in in support of, yes, we should use the existing processes defined in our rules and procedure. But I was, my question was, do we need to take action to create this ad hoc? So we'll do that at our next council meeting. I see nods from important people who know the answer. So, um, so we would take, we would create this ad hoc at the next meeting and that, um, yeah, okay.
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilmember Ray. I believe that it was in the earlier slides from the city clerk that the plan, the plan, as long as this conversation, um, aligns with that plan, is that on March 7th, we would take the action to create that ad hoc at our next meeting. I'm seeing a head nod from the city clerk. So that is great. And, um, I, not seeing any further comments, so I will at this point just say, um, please indicate with a thumbs up if you are supportive of having council leadership, um, ask for interest in committees from, from all of the council members, using that input and using a process similar to the regional, um, regional appointments to make those decisions about who serves on which committee. So if you're in support of that, please indicate with the thumbs up. All right, consensus on that, so that will go forward. And then, um, do we have any additional questions about the council rules ad hoc? And I will throw out one question, which is, um, should we decide the members of the ad hoc now or should we, um, wait until we, we set up that committee? And this might be also a question for the, the city clerk, if, if you have a preference about that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So the, um, the ad hoc committee does need to be reestablished, um, at the March 7th council meeting and the appointments could occur, um, at that time. You will be publishing the agenda materials here in the next few days. So, um, one option could be preparing the agenda bill and then, um, kind of having that surveying occur and then the council president, uh, announcing the appointments, um, undergo to the order at the meeting. Um, so it's not a requirement to establish the committee, but it should be determined shortly thereafter, certainly.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So I'll check in with, um, the leadership then. Does that sound like a plan that we would use the regular committee process? Um, committee, the, the committee process that we just outlined to ask for interest in this rules ad hoc and then leader, council leadership would decide the members and that would be announced after the, um, the formal creation of the ad hoc? Does that sound like a plan that makes sense and that you agree with?
Yeah, I think that sounds great. And I'll just put the call out that please email us and let us know if you're interested and we'll start discussing and we'll call you if we have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe that was the last of our policy questions posed by the administration, but I will check in with Clerk Gieser if there's any other information you would like us to deliberate on or questions you would like answered from us.
No, thank you so much. And I'll note that it's exactly 8:30 PM.
I noted that too. Um, so that is exactly on time and I think both of our items were exactly on time. So thank you for noticing that. All right, um, there is no good of the order this evening because it is a special meeting and no items were, um, chosen by council or noticed by council in advance. So, uh, the administrator Bob Quitz has an announcement.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Hunt, members of the council, um, this is your last scheduled virtual meeting. Um, and so just as a reminder, we will be in the council chambers, uh, for the city council meeting next week. Uh, we have a mask requirement and so, uh, you'll be required to wear masks or other kind of face covering, um, at the meeting. Uh, the governor has indicated, uh, and the county executive that on, uh, March 12th, that mask requirement will go away. Um, the administration is still pondering if we will extend it, uh, at city facilities beyond that. Um, but, uh, but for March 7th, there will be a mask requirement, a face covering requirement for all of you and so we'll be back, um, to that. So I, it's been a while since I've been in the chambers. I don't know if anyone has any questions, um, but, uh, other than that, just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you for the announcement. I will check if any council member has any questions for city administrator Bob Quitz. I'm not seeing any. So in that event, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you, everyone.